Good evening, welcome to our final council meeting of 2023 and for this current council as it's composed. Thank you all for coming and happy holidays. Hope you're all enjoying the holiday season. Please join, oh, by the way, we had an executive session at six o'clock tonight to talk about certain personnel matters and litigation. And now please join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Virginia, would you start a roll call of council?
Yes, who? Mayor Wallace?
Present.
Ms. Price-Dinglehart?
Present.
Ms. Helen Alamo?
Present.
Mr. Lubin?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor?
Scott Holbert, and I also have Adam Flager here with us from Flager Associates.
Okay, thank you. And of course, our borough manager?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Announcements, presentations, do we have any? Okay, moving on. Public comment. I have the sign up sheet. If any of you want to make a public comment and have not signed up, please do so now and I'll come down and get a second sheet. But please, when I call your name, come to the podium and repeat your name and address, and you each have three minutes. I'll be timing and I'll cut you off at three minutes. Starting with Peggy Wilson. Oh, Peggy Walsh, I couldn't read, sorry Peggy. I figured, I thought it might be you, but it looked like Wilson, in case.
So my name is Peggy Walsh, and we've lived on Stockham Avenue for about 40 years, and I'm here tonight to thank two people on council. First, Bob Paul. I'm so grateful for your vote to ensure that Gary Wallace will be our new mayor. I know that this was a difficult personal decision for you, Bob, and you could have chosen the easy way out, but you voted in the best interests of our borough by giving us a young, enthusiastic, maybe not so young, I just heard tonight, enthusiastic mayor, who's outside of the fray of the old politics that have kept this town from making progress for years. It's not often these days for people to do the honorable thing rather than the personally expedient thing. So, thank you, Bob. I only hope that the members of council will welcome Gary as a breath of much-needed fresh air and a chance to start over. I also want to thank Nancy Sherlock for her tireless dedication to Morrisville and its citizens. It's no secret that I'm not happy with the election results in the second ward, especially since the outcome was achieved through a vicious, deceitful, and invective campaign. But I believe in democracy and must accept the results of the election. I know Nancy well enough to be assured that she will still work and volunteer to create activities to make our park a family-friendly, active hub for the community, often using her own money and resources and her family for activities when council and the borough manage or block at spending money. She will continue to try to get good people for the various committees in the borough, deliver her meals to senior citizens, organize the teal campaign for ovarian cancer awareness, and continue volunteering at Holy Trinity. Nancy has always conducted herself with grace and dignity, even when faced with false accusations and constant disdain and criticism from members of this board and borough management, who to may seem only interested in self-promotion and character assassination. Meanwhile, I never see these people volunteering to do much positive for our community. I only hope that the new council will turn a new leaf in the new year and work together with new members and the mayor to tap the enormous potential of our gem of a town. Morrisville, we'll miss you on council, Nancy, but I know that you will continue to do your good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin Reifmeyer.
Hi, Robin Reifmeyer, 335 Hamilton Boulevard. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Nancy for, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Nancy for her tireless effort over the last 30 years. You've worked, the people don't understand the amount of time that you put into this and how much effort you put into this. If only everybody would. I really wish you the best, Nancy. I know you'll continue, like Peggy said, to do all of the things you've done to help the community. Thanks.
Paul Carcevar.
Paul Carcevar, 122 West Palmer. Thank the board for their tireless effort. Bob, thank you for the four years. I know you put a lot of effort into it, and you went out on your own terms for that. That's a good thing. And Nancy, thank you for all the years. I've only been here for a short period of time, but you always are there, texting, phone calls, knocking on doors. So I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy New Year, Christmas season. Just be safe, and I look forward to seeing everyone out there in different places. Thanks.
Thank you. Diane Marsaglia.
Thank you, Diane Marsaglia, Middletown Township, but I'm just here tonight. On behalf of the commissioners, I wanted to say also thank you, Nancy. The sad part of your leaving is you're one of the people that's been maybe in office longer than me, so now I'm going to have to feel like I'm one of the senior people here. Truthfully, I have worked with you many times over the years. I could never deliver on things for the first few years I was in office, but for the past four or five years, I have been able to. It's been a pleasure to work with you on trying to get Stockham to where it is right now, to work on the co-responder program. I thank you for last year when you worked with me and the chief to get those police cars, and I will miss being able to work with you, but I know where to find you. But I am also here because I have a proclamation from the governor that I would like to give to you tonight, and I'll just read it. It's very brief. Dear Nancy, congratulations on 30 years of dedicated service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Morrisville community. In true public service, you spent your career bettering the lives of countless Pennsylvanians. You brought a sense of professionalism and expertise into everything you did, and that will be missed by many. I wish you all the best in the future and in all your endeavors. All the best, Governor Josh Shapiro.
Thank you.
It's a little bit overwhelming. Thank you.
Rosemary Winchell? I apologize for pronunciation.
It's pretty good. It's Winchell. Thank you. Rosemary Winchell, I'm from Senator Steve Santisiro's office, and here to present Nancy with a flag that has been flown over the Commonwealth in your honor, and also for a citation from the Senate of Pennsylvania recognizing your years of service for Morrisville Borough. Unfortunately, Steve could not be here, so he asked me to present this in your, in his stead. And also just want to say, you know, communities don't just happen, and good communities don't just happen without strong public service. So Nancy, you've done that part, and I think I want to congratulate you on that and welcome all, everyone else on council to the hard work that's involved in making this community strong. So Nancy, on behalf of Senator Steve Santisiro in the Senate of Pennsylvania, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Colgan.
Debbie Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. I'd like to thank all the council members for giving your time to Morrisville. It's a hard job, and it's a significant commitment, and it is appreciated, even when we don't agree. I'd especially like to thank Nancy Sherlock for her impactful work on council. Nancy, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for listening and responding to residents. Thank you for always putting Morrisville's interests first. Nancy's been a strong supporter of Morrisville's environmental resources, understanding the many benefits that they provide. For example, with Nancy's leadership as council president, the borough was able to take advantage of county open space program to protect and enhance our open space, our green spaces. She ensured cooperation at Borough Hall and among council. As the open space plan was developed, grants were awarded, and grant administration ensued. She supported and protected the protection of our riverfront through the creation of the Riverfront Preserve. And, and when we were fundraising, she was one of the very first people who reached into her own pocket to donate. When we hit snacks, Nancy cleared the way. Cooperation within the borough on the open space plan allowed further access to funds for other projects like the Dog Park and the eventual acquisition of Patriots Park. Nancy uses her large network to keep people informed, share ideas, and effectively act. Over the years, as EAC chair, chair, I come home and I find copies of articles or brochures on my doorstep that alerted the EAC to opportunities or issues and to help further our work. Promoting the arts, culture, and history in Morrisville has been a constant for Nancy. The Sherlock Foundation's Jazz Fest, activities to support the library, and interest in highlighting Morrisville's past are just a few of the many ways that she has championed the unique character of Morrisville. Nancy has always celebrated the contributions of volunteers, recognizing the value that they bring to our community. And she's a role model for all of us, giving her time, her energy, her knowledge, and her muscle to all sorts of projects and events. So, thank you, Nancy, for your service as a council member and for all of your work throughout the area that improves the lives of so many. I know that you will continue to be a strong force in Morrisville, and I'm one of the many who'd like to see you back upon that dais in a few years. Thank you.
Barbara Bauer.
Good evening, council. My name is Barbara Bauer. I'm 505 Woodland Avenue, and I serve as the chair for the Morrisville Civil Service Commission. I'm here today regarding the borough's need to fill vacancies for the position of full-time police officer. By the way of background, on September 19th, 2023, Borough Council authorized the Civil Service Commission to develop and certify a list of eligible candidates for a full-time police officer. Utilizing the Bucks County Police Consortium testing process, the commission attempted to develop a list requested. However, the commission's most recent meeting, due to the disqualification of a lone individual who submitted an application, the commission was unable to certify an eligibility list because this candidate was disqualified. The next consortium is scheduled to set, to take place in April 2024. However, consortium testing is not a prerequisite in hiring a full-time police officer. In situations like this, we have another way to handle it. And in order to fulfill the responsibilities of developing an eligibility list, the commission is prepared to conduct its own testing should council desire the commission to pursue that course of action. An option for such civil service commission administered testing is the civil service to utilize the National Police Office Selection Test, known as POST. This is a highly regarded standardized test for entry-level written tests that have been utilized by other commissions in the area. The cost of the exam is approximately $1,850 a test, and the commission members would grade the tests. If we send it out to be graded, it would be $2,450 a test, and that would take longer to get the results back. The option could result in the borough hiring an officer much more quickly than if it chose to wait until the next round of the consortium testing in April. Additionally, it is possible that qualified individuals who did not take part in the last round of the consortium testing would be interested in the CSC administered testing, meaning there could be a larger pool of applicants from whom the eligibility list could be created, assuming there are applicants for the proposed CSC administered testing, such as eligible list would be created much more quickly than if the borough chose to wait until April. If council wishes to suspend the eligibility list development process until April 2024 consortium testing schedule, the CSC will respect that preferred course of action. However, the CSC feels that administering the test itself is the best option. Importantly, there are already vacant police office positions, and more vacancies may open in the coming months due to current officers choosing to retire or take other employment elsewhere. Having an eligibility list, ideally with several candidates created as soon as possible, could serve the borough in filling both current vacancies and any future vacancies which may arise moving forward. Should council want to proceed with the CSC administered testing, the commission would prefer to make the necessary authorizations at its next meeting, which is tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing.
Can we open that for a conversation, a small conversation?
We'll get the action, we'll get the action. Clay Aberts? Okay. Before we move on, I just want to add my thanks to Nancy Sherlock for her 30 years of service to the community. I also want to recognize our other departing council members, Carlitha Murray and Jason Manis, who both stepped in in the middle of the four-year terms on council, and they've served for the last couple of years with great energy and distinction and conscientiousness, and they've been very fast learners. We, we would have been lost without them. They, they really ended up being kind of the, the key figures because a lot of, a lot of us brought a lot of baggage to the table and still carry a lot of baggage around, and they were kind of the, the honest brokers to get us through a very difficult couple of years. That's, you know, that's included, we, we lost our previous borough manager to cancer, unfortunately. We went through COVID for a couple of years. We've, we, we, we lost our mayor. We've had our, our issues with the police chief. It's been a really, really tough year for everyone on council. And in addition to Jason and Carlitha and Nancy, I want to thank everyone else. I want to thank Catherine, and Andrew, and Scott, and Helen. It's, you know, we, 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 we've had some pretty volatile meetings. We seldom agree on anything, but I applaud the goodwill and willingness of everybody to come to the table and at least hammer things out. And nobody shirked their duties, nobody shirked their responsibilities. It wasn't pretty. It, it got pretty ugly at times and pretty prickly, but through it all, all eight of us stuck with it, and I think that the, the borough is in a little better shape because of it, but I can assure you that we did the best we could. Thank you. Thank you to all of you. And now moving on with the business part of the meeting, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve any or all of these minutes of the special meetings, budget meetings, and council meetings?
So moved. We can do these in block? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Until someone objects.
Mr. Paul, may I confirm the first was Ms. Alamo?
Nancy Sherlock, and then Andrew Lubin was the second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to finance. Can I get a call for a motion to approve the bill list and to pay the bills?
I so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions.
Sorry?
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
It was the info. Mr. Paul?
Yes?
Just to give the total of the bills paid this month, $582,563.60.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. The mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
I'll get used to this one day. Good evening, council and our beloved community. I'm thrilled to share my first mayor's report with you all, just one month into this incredible journey. Firstly, I would like to express my gratitude to the council for entrusting me with the significant responsibility of serving as your mayor. I also extend my heartfelt thanks to the residents for welcoming me with open arms. The warmth and support I've received have made my transition into office truly remarkable. In short, in my short time as mayor, I've dedicated myself to understanding the intricacies of my role and developing into the heart of our beloved community. One of my primary concerns is your safety and well-being, and I am pleased to report that our police department is operating smoothly. I commend all of the officers for their dedication in ensuring our streets are secure. A special appreciation goes to Corporal Smith for his exceptional leadership during this transition period. I am actively engaging with each officer to gain a comprehensive understanding of our police department and to provide guidance for its forward progress. But I do ask that everyone, please ensure that your property is locked and secured. Do not leave valuables in your vehicles and make sure they're locked at all times. As part of our commitment to enhancing police operations, we have recently hired Chief Simpson as a consultant and director of police operations. I'm excited about the prospect of working closely with Chief Simpson, learning from his experience, and furthering my knowledge of the police department. A warm welcome, welcome to Chief Simpson. Secondly, I would like to express my gratitude to our beloved community for the overwhelming support I have received in this short time. The countless emails and phone calls, as well as the joyous winter fress parade, have left an indebted mark on me. The annual, the annual story with the mayor and tree lighting ceremony at Borough Hall, especially with our youngest residents, was a delightful occasion. I extend my, my thanks to everyone who participated in the festivities. I encourage all residents to remain engaged and not hesitate to reach out. You can find all my contact information on our borough website, and you can also connect with me on Instagram and Facebook. Both are at @GaryEWallace on both platforms. Tuesdays, I call my borough day because I'm here all day, so if you are around, stop in and say hello, or schedule some time for us to sit and chat. Your input is invaluable, and I look forward to hearing from each one of you as we work together to make Morrisville an ever-brieter community. Thank you. Thank you, Morrisville, for your warm welcome and continued support. Together, let's build a stronger, more vibrant future for our town. And also just wanted to say happy holidays to you all. Enjoy your time with your family and loved ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police chief's report. Corporal Smith, our officer in charge.
Good evening. I just want to address a couple topics. So I'm going to address a couple topics, and I'm going to try to keep it very limited. Situation with our body worn cameras is under control now. Officer Mitchell August had contacted WatchGuard. He secured new batteries at no cost to the borough. That will at least stabilize our situation into 2024, where I have discussed with the mayor and the manager about pursuing a grant to try to pay for a new system. Staying with the topic of technology, I wanted to briefly explain the item on the Agenda 8F. Currently, we have three aging mobile data terminals in the police cars. They're the computers that the officers use. I have once, I have actually two spare Motorola XP6500 encrypted police radios that we are not using. Our upfitter, SKD Tryon in Bristol Township, has agreed to exchange at no cost, give us two brand-new, fully-functional, and installed mobile data terminals in exchange for that one radio. I'm hoping everybody takes that into consideration and approves that. That would save the borough approximately $8,846. Item A on the agenda is a motion to hire a part-time police officer, Joseph Perrell, who is here and present tonight. I ask that you do please consider hiring him. During his background investigation, I received nothing but positive feedback about Joe as a person, a police officer, and a volunteer firefighter. He has 10 years' experience as a police officer, and he is present and ready to begin working for us immediately. Officer Howes completed his motor carrier enforcement training. He completed the 32 mentored inspections that were required. He is now officially on his own and allowed to conduct inspections. I'd like to thank Sergeant McHaleen of the Falls Township Police Department for mentoring him for all 32 inspections at no cost to the borough. The investigation into the commercial motor vehicle accident in the 800 block of South Pennsylvania Avenue earlier in the week is almost complete. Officer Howes conducted a mechanical inspection on that truck today. I cannot release what he has found yet. At this time, we do consider that a portion of the accident appears to be, have been caused by driver error. As of today, I still have not received the financial proposal for the cost to replace the truck scale. I've been in communication with Fairbanks, who is the one that maintains our scale. The reason he's giving me for not having that proposal is because there's some dynamic concrete work that needs to be done. So before he gives me the proposal, he wants to make sure it's a solid number where it won't increase, the cost would only decrease during the project if we find other things don't need to be done. Lastly, the Hookah Lounge at 630 Crown Street. I work every other weekend, sometimes every weekend, depending on the schedule. I'm well aware of the problem there. I've been in contact with Mr. And then there's a portion of this project that I can't discuss in public because it's going to be a police operation. And obviously, Ben won't want to give anybody the upper hand or a tip what's going to happen, if anything. But that's all I have for tonight, unless anyone has any questions.
I have a question. Officer Howes is now ready to go. Is there a schedule made for him as to when he will be patrolling or if, the hours that he will be patrolling?
I have talked to him about that. He is an intricate, he plays an intricate role right now in patrol, but what I'm looking at is possibly using the grant money to, for him to work that detail on overtime. Officer Perrell, over the next month, will be, he'll be hired, trained, and ready to work, and whenever Officer Howes is working, Officer Perrell's available, I can switch them to Officer Perrell in his place, so Officer Howes can concentrate strictly on motor carrier from time to time. But our manpower issue, as Barbara Bauer had mentioned, we are in a crisis.
Right. And so when Officer Howes is patrolling on his regular duty, will he be able to do trucks or he has to be on patrol?
There's three levels of inspections. Level one would be a complete inspection where he would actually have to lay under the truck. That wouldn't be feasible for officer safety reasons, for having only one patrol officer available. So basically, as he and I have done already on South Pennsylvania Avenue, we've stopped these trucks, identified disqualified drivers, and some equipment that the truck can be put out of service for, which he would then have to continue that inspection later in the day. But as of right now, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, on his regular shift, he could not do level one inspections.
Okay. And did the gentleman who is giving us the quote on the scale, two-part question, is that prohibiting Officer Alice from doing anything? I mean, obviously, he can't weigh trucks, but is there someplace else he can take the trucks to get weighed?
So Officer Howes and I are the weigh masters of the department. We can go down to Clean Earth or Waste Management. I was going to contact them once I found out exactly what was going on with his mentoring. Now that that's complete, I do believe they will let us use their scales. I have personally used Clean Earth scale in the past.
And do we have an idea about like what the cost will be? I know you cannot, can't give us, but like, is it a target of 100 grand? Is it a target of 50 grand? I get it might be up, it might be down, but...
I would hope it does not exceed $100,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
And just one more note on the weighing of trucks. When you stop a truck, if you don't have portable scales, you have to take it, the truck, to another location. It's the rule of thumb is as the crow flies to two-square-mile radius that we're allowed to escort that truck. Any further than that, we wouldn't be able to, so that's why we try to utilize what Waste Management has.
Okay. Yeah, because they're within two miles.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. Well, congratulations to Officer Howes. Looking forward for him working down there.
Yes.
There was also trucks that hit, went over the Calhoun Street Bridge that was a sleeper truck, which is huge. Do you know anything, what happened there?
The state police are contracted to handle the bridge.
Okay.
They should have done something about it, but I do not know if they did. But I can assure you, anything that I say, Officer Howes sees, and mostly the other officers as far as the trucks crossing Calhoun Street Bridge or Trent Makes Bridge, they are stopped and they are ticketed.
I saw one today about 2:30 in the afternoon. I took a video, but I can't quite get the license plate because a car got in my way.
I can assure you, we are, we are on this problem.
Yeah. And then there was another car that was hit on West Trenton Avenue by, it looks like a dump truck. Was anybody hurt there or is everything all right there?
I have not reviewed the reports yet.
Okay. And nobody was hurt when the house was hit, correct?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, good.
We will take care of this truck problem.
Oh, I know.
There is a plan in place to take care of this truck problem.
That's great to hear.
Will be addressed.
Yeah. I'm looking forward to it. So are the residents on the first ward. Thank you.
I have a quick question, Corporal Smith, real quick. Is there any update or progress on a vehicle for Officer Howes to use for truck enforcement, which the portable scale and whatnot would be in there, or are we still waiting for that?
I have discussed that with the manager. We are waiting on the possibility of the money being given to us as either a vehicle granted to us or the money granted. But it will not stop the motor carrier program, but it is difficult to function for the officer in the space that he has, but we will make it work.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the borough manager's report. Judith?
Good evening, everyone. I too would like to thank everyone here this evening. It's been a trying year, and everyone put their best foot forward and did the best work that they could possibly do in gaining all of the things that we were able to accomplish. So I would like to thank everyone for the year 2023. I would also like to jump up and say, yes, we did it. We did it. We finally completed the Bridge Street project, which the photos are over here. Construction is complete. The final inspection was December 14th. It was wonderful. We had probably at least 35 representatives at the bridge that day doing the inspection and the walkthrough. The work is wonderful. It's now open for use, so I encourage everyone to please go out there and look at this wonderful project and please use it. It's very unique with the solar lights that we have for the crosswalk. So again, it was a wonderful project that started and it's finished. We would like to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony take place in early spring. We talked about working with the MEAC and PEC. Patrick Starr has confirmed that they're willing to take care of whatever the costs are to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony party. So I'm hoping that maybe what we can do is group together out in that area and get something together to do in the early spring and have a celebration. It's important to celebrate the positive things that have been taking place in the borough. So everyone involved with this project, thank you. It's finally finished. I also, we were supposed to talk about a sketch plan this evening. It had gone to the planning commission. 225 Plaza Boulevard is proposing a brand-new car wash where the old car wash was. They're planning on demolishing that and putting up a new car wash, so we will probably see a presentation regarding this in the future. But it's just information for everyone to know that you will have a new car wash in place of the old one, which is very positive. I also wrote and submitted a grant for two public works vehicles, one F-550 dump truck with a salt spreader and plow and one F-250 pickup with a plow. We're still awaiting the first grant that we had gotten for a dump truck. We should be getting that any day. So that was taxpayer dollars for free, which was a wonderful thing that we were awarded. I also attended the Morrisville Business Association meeting, and we discussed with Bucks County and RDA and Commissioner Bob Harvey on future projects. We spoke briefly about the Stockholm properties and so forth, and we look forward to having meetings regarding the cloverleaf and so forth in the upcoming 2024 year. We also had a kickoff meeting with Snyder Hoffman. That meeting was for the emergency electrical panel here in the borough. We're awaiting the panels, and soon as, as soon as they come, the work will begin in the new year. The roof status, we're proud to announce, that is almost complete. We're hoping that the material for the flashing comes in shortly, and as soon as that takes place, we'll be moving along there. I would also like to say that we worked diligently with our budget this year. We have a lot of things that are taking place, and it's very positive. We have a lot of things that are taking place in the borough office downstairs with payroll and finance and things that are being looked into that have not been correctly processed in the past. So we're working on all of those items. We have a team that we've put together, an accounting team and a legal team, and we're doing, we're working on all of those issues and items, and we'll be prepared to really, really get a lot of things done in the 2024 year. Are there any questions from council?
I have a quick question. The roof repairs, do we have a definite timeframe? The reason I'm asking is the parking lot is closed until the roof is completed, and there's some residents over on Union Street that have, always have parked in the front of the parking lot, and now they have to walk a little further since they don't have that parking.
I don't have a date as of yet.
We have a guesstimate date?
We're hoping within the next week or so.
Before, before next summer?
Oh, oh my goodness. No, weeks.
Okay.
Weeks, yes. Weeks, yes.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Judith for her tireless efforts over the last two and a half years. She hit the ground running, came into a very difficult situation with the passing of Scott Mitchell and the backlog that that created. We had all the other issues that we've dealt with in town, as I mentioned earlier, COVID, losing the mayor, et cetera. And Judith has been working 24/7 for the better part of most of the, most of those two and a half years, and I really appreciate her efforts and her ability to get things done. Thank you, Judith.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that.
I have a couple of questions. Bridge Street, the light at Bridge Street, some residents have complained. Is there any way, and I did talk to John later about this, but we need to do a study, is my understanding, is when you are going north on Pennsylvania Avenue and you are trying to make a left on the Bridge Street, is it possible to get an arrow there because it's difficult to make that left?
It's something we can look into.
And the second thing about that light, that light, when you're standing on Pennsylvania Avenue, is very long, and if you actually take the toll bridge and then come off in order to come into Morrisville, it's a shorter distance to try to not pay the toll and get off at the state exit and come over the Trent Makes Bridge, and you will go through that light before you will go through the light taking the toll bridge. So is there a way we can adjust the timing of that light so that when you're standing on Pennsylvania Avenue, you're not there as long?
We would have to discuss that with PennDOT also. We could look into that.
Is that PennDOT or is that Morrisville?
Timing would be PennDOT.
John, can you, John, can you come out for a second? I brought this up a couple of years ago from what she said. If you're coming south on Route 1 in New Jersey and you get off the last exit to avoid the toll, there's four red lights. And when I come home from work at night, I come through the toll booth and I get off at the Jiffy Wash, and I sit at that light. And it looks like the magnetic metal things are in the ground to trip that. I don't think they're working because there are people that get off and sit through, I'm not, I don't think all four of them are red, but a couple, a couple of them are red, and they come and they go through, and they have the green light going west on Bridge Street, make the left and get back on Route 1 to avoid the toll. That light has to be adjustable. I know it's not on a timer and the sensor that trips it isn't, I mean, I've seen it go to work, and this is 3 o'clock in the morning when nobody else is on the road, when I'm coming down and I have a green light, and then before I get to it's a stale green, turns red, then you get the, the green light going west with the arrow, and then the arrow goes out, and then they get a green light, and sometimes I sat there for two or three minutes waiting for that light to change.
Yeah, we can, I can, I can call Armor and have them come out and look and see if there's something wrong with the strips.
Right.
But other than that, that's all done by permit through PennDOT, the timing, all that. So we can't just go and say, oh, we want to change that to a minute. It doesn't work that way. So it's a whole process. Studying everything.
The lights on the New Jersey side almost look timed to slow you down for probably trying to beat the toll, but it's still quicker.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll have, I'll have Armor come out, take a look and make sure that the strip, the strips are working, and if they are, then it's a matter of going to PennDOT.
And I get it at rush hour because you want traffic to clear out. You don't want it backed up, but I mean, non-rush hour traffic, that sitting on Pennsylvania Avenue is way longer than sitting on Bridge.
Yeah, I understand. We'll take a look at that, and then we'll, we'll get back to Judith and let her know what's going on.
Well, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
And one other thing, Pennsylvania Avenue, South Pennsylvania Avenue is no longer the primary arterial. It was made the secondary arterial. I had sent some emails to PennDOT asking what the borough can now start doing with signage, et cetera. I know I had forwarded those to you, Judith. Is there anything, any updates on that?
There are not, not at this time. We have not heard back from PennDOT.
Have you contacted them and filled out the forms that they were requiring?
We did not fill out any forms at this time yet.
And can you tell us the status of the Manor Park Playground in terms of the grant? And when is that, when will we hear if we received money in order to update that playground?
So I spoke with Bob Harvey in person, and I also have been emailing back and forth. They were unable to help us, and what we're doing is we'll be resubmitting for the next round.
When is that?
We're, Bob's going to get back to me on that.
So do we have a timeframe, like when, when that submission is?
I don't have that right now, no.
Okay. One other thing, people always come to me with complaints, and they don't really know that Trazer exists. I know we have Facebook posts, but they're not very informative. Is there a way that we can put on the borough a Facebook page, things that the residents should know? For instance, like, got a complaint, go into Trazer, this is where you go. No garbage collection this week because it's a holiday, so it's now Tuesday, Friday, because not, not, that kind of information is not posted to them, and there are other groups where people are constantly asking the same questions.
Certainly, we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Committee reports.
Yes, Mr. President. We have a finance committee report.
Thank you.
Do you want to go first? Okay, thank you. So the budget is balanced, and looking down the dais, I want to thank Nancy, Catherine, Judith, of course, and Scott, Helen and Scott for coming in. We had some very interesting, very spirited discussions about the budget. We are a small business, we are a medium-sized business, biggest budget Morrisville ever had, approximately $6.8 million. It's balanced. We have a surplus, we have a positive cash flow. I'm going to let Judith go through the details, but basically, we have, there's a decrease in real estate taxes. Thank you for the EIT. We have a capital reserve fund, and we have money to start rebuilding roads. We have been able to refund everything that's been taken away the last few years. We are, we are, and if you get a copy of this sheet that was up on the table, it gives you details. But again, it's been a very, we have a good budget for 2024. Much your thanks to Judith. Judith, let me turn this over to you.
Thank you, Andrew. And again, thank you, everyone who attended budget meetings. We had a lot of great input, and I believe that we have a good guide for 2024. We have a balanced budget with a decrease in real estate tax of five mils and a capital reserve fund due to the new EIT revenue. So when we had enacted the new EIT revenue, this now allows us not to have to go to the court because we are now at an allowable real estate millage, which will be 30 mils, instead of having to go to court every year and asking for five extra mils of real estate taxes. So that, though, is a decrease of approximately $291,000 in real estate revenue. So that revenue gets replaced with the EIT. So we now have a new line item of income for 2024 of $1.4 million. The trending is continuing because we don't know, it's, because it's newly enacted, and we'll continue to watch the trending. We also, excuse me, we also have a contribution that we do get from the MMA every year for $450,000. The future contributions for that was unknown, so we'll have to be reviewing that in 2025 because the potential loss will have, we'll have to dip into the capital reserves that we've just created, and that could put us at an unacceptable number. We've saved a lot of money in reference to grants. We've gotten... The future contributions for that was unknown, so we'll have to be reviewing that in 2025 because the potential loss will have, we'll have to dip into the capital reserves that we've just created, and that could put us at an unacceptable number. We've saved a lot of money in reference to grants. We've gotten three police cars in the past couple of years, one dump truck with a salt spreader and plow, and we're working on other grants as we talk. We, some of the expenses that we talked about are in the budget, the $100,000 for the police truck weight scale, that is in the police budget this year. So that's a positive thing. We normally would not have the funds to do something of that nature. Our, our pensions are fully funded, the revenues are an incoming revenue and incoming expenditure when it comes to those items. We also, excuse me, we also have a mandatory $4,830.37 added to our library budget because this is something that we must do for the replacement of their, their PCs. The library program line was increased for $1,000. Last year, we did get $2,000 worth of donations, we're hoping to get the same thing for that. The YMCA was one of the donators and very graciously, because they do bring the children over. So we're, we're happy to hear that, you know, that that takes place. We also have an allocation of $75,000 towards matching grants for the playgrounds. So if anything does transpire with grant applications that there's a match, we have some funds put aside so we can pay to have that match. So that's a wonderful thing. We won't have to ask, well, could you donate this? Or we can't do this grant because we don't have the matching allocated funds. So we're proud to announce that also. We're no longer utilizing liquid fuels to pay our payroll with that. That means that the $250,000 a year that we do get for liquid fuels can be utilized for future roads. So we plan on putting a road program together again, and we hope to do at least two roads a year, and I think that's very positive if we can stay on track to do that. Depending on how the EIT goes, we could certainly do more roads in the future, if that's something that the next council is willing to or interested in doing. We're happy to also announce that sanitation will only be an $8 increase for residential and only a $15 increase for commercial in the 2024 fee schedule. Those are some of the items that are on our synopsis, which we'll have available online for everyone to see. And if you'd like a hard copy, please stop into the Borough Office. We also did some projects with our ARPA funds. We spent almost $22,000 on a new Gas Boy fuel system, which was much needed. We spent almost $20,000 on the SOAR here at the Borough Hall, which was much needed. We spent approximately $18,000 on plumbing within the building. We'll be, we'll be putting in a new, some new plumbing fixtures in the police department this year, we have that included. We installed new HVAC, excuse me, I apologize. We installed a new HVAC system in the ambulance building, which is right across the parking lot, that was $10,300. The roof came to $232,250. We have not closed that out yet, we don't know if there'll be any extras with that. And the electric that we have planned, that must take place in the Borough Building downstairs, comes to about $104,000. So we put together quite a few projects, we have some incoming projects for the new year that we'd like to do. But at this time, we have a balanced budget with a contingency fund of $750,000 that we'll need to utilize. And that's something that, you know, I wanted to talk about. What takes place is we did use last year with funds that came in, for example, we had $2,335,000, $335,000 worth of, of monies that needed to be spent from December through May when we do not get our tax dollars. So we are constantly utilizing the funds on a revolving basis, and that's just for the accounts payable. That doesn't even include the payroll items that we have. So I'm hoping that that gives everybody a, a good insight as to, you know, what we're dealing with, with, with some of the things that take place. And again, in the budget, there aren't any frivolous items, these are all necessary things for within the borough. We did increase Parks and Recreation in several areas, events and so forth, so we're hopeful that we can accomplish some positive things in the future for that in the year 2024. But again, I'm proud to announce that we have a very good budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yes, can I just ask one question on the budget? So when, when you're saying that we don't have money to pay the bills from December to, to March, and I understand that, that money is sitting there, but theoretically, our budget at the end of the year will always be in a surplus situation because that money will then get paid when the taxes come in, correct?
If we're not over our budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Catherine?
Parks, Parks and Recreation. In November, we didn't have a meeting because I'd been asked by Judith to keep it open in case we needed it for the budget. And so we didn't have one. But I am going to have one in December, it's the day after Christmas, I know, but I will be here. So I hope some of you will, will show up. One of the things I want to talk about is the schedule for next year, because I'd like to present that to the new council as soon as possible. And just some things that are going to be coming up, some possible grants and stuff to move forward. But as far as the end of the year, we had a fabulous year in the parks, we had great events, we, you know, worked harder this year in getting the benches and the tables looking good. And it just, you know, you drive by and it's like a whole new park and a lot of the trees that were planted, and just making it really a beautiful place to be. And we've got a great response from the public for it. So thank you very much, and thank you for your continued support on what we're doing and what we're trying to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for all that you and your committee did to put all those events on throughout the year, really appreciate it. Any other committees that would like to report?
I don't have anything to report, but I was wondering, what is the status of that building on Bridge Street by the Trenton Makes Bridge? Is that a smoke shop or what is going on with that?
No, it is not a smoke shop. They were going to be provided a temporary CO, although they're working through the, the ending final inspections. It's noted on the permit that no tobacco products are allowed. They did cover, cover up the smoke area on the sign, the outdoor sign. The applicant and owner have been notified several times that if there is anything tobacco product related in their, in the building or being sold, that they will be shut down. There's a stop work order will take place. So it's not intended to be used for those purposes, and it's on the permit itself. And even the emails have stated that time and time again. The owner has been notified also verbally. I just spoke to Code in the past couple of days, and the owner was notified verbally also, along with in writing. They've been going over this several times, but it is not supposed to be a smoke shop.
And does that include the glassware that can be sold sometimes for other uses?
I would have to check with Code.
And if not, if that needs to be in the ordinance, is that something that can be placed in the ordinance, Mr. Holbert?
Yes, we can, if, if that's something I believe, but I believe, I would have to go back and look, but I believe was something we covered originally as well.
Okay, just a minute, I don't recall the ordinance off the top of my head, but it would be good to add so that that-
I believe paraphernalia was included in the ordinance.
I thought so, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to action items. Item 8A, calling for a motion to hire Joseph Perrell as a part-time police officer.
So moved.
Second.
Is Joseph Perrell looking to be a full-time officer? Was that? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries.
Want the mayor to swear him in now, or, I'm going to do it at the end of the meeting, want to swear him in now?
Let's swear him in now, before he changes his mind.
Yeah.
Welcome, Officer Perrell. Oh, there you are.
Your 2,000 shift starts right now.
I, Joseph Perrell, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Yeah. Get those criminals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, be safely.
Thank you very much.
And before we move further into resolutions, I wanted to introduce the audience to Jerry Simpson, who just started working here this week as our Director of Police Activities to oversee the police department while we're going through this transitional period, looking for a new police chief. And Jerry's got an incredible background, he's going to help guide us toward better management and greater transparency with respect to the operations of our police force. He wanted to stand up and say hello?
Thank you. Today, everyone, my name is Jerry Simpson, I am a retired police chief, actually been here during this time, I've been in the field for about 40 years, and I look forward to working with the community, working with the municipal mayor's office. And I've only been here a couple of days without saying I'm from the room, right? You know, thank Corporal Smith and the administrative staff of the police department, they all have turned around with them the last couple of days, knowing that they are very cooperative and supportive of their needs and the needs of the community. So sincerely looking forward to working with you over the next couple of months as I am, what's needed, helping the public safety on your end of the year, all right? Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, action item 8B, call for motion to adopt the 2024 final budget.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Budget carries unanimously, thank you. Item 8C, call for motion to adopt the 2024 tax levy resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, we don't, yep, I just want to mention, if we don't do this, we're not really doing the budget.
Okay, well, I guess we're really doing the budget, so we're really doing this.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8D, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of $58,000 to Capitol Health as payment per the EMS fund as of December 31, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd just like to, so, yeah, I'd like to comment. So during the budgets, we had discussed about Capitol Health, and again, I'm not suggesting that we reduce the amounts that we pay them, but can you have a conversation with them? And I did the worksheet, but I left it at home. The Falls Township is getting an inordinate amount of services based on the dollars that they're paying them. So is there a way to have a conversation with Capitol Health in order for them to go and have a conversation with Falls in order to get more money from Falls and reduce the amount that Morrisville is paying them?
Yes, we're going to look into that, thank you.
Okay, I'll send you the worksheet that I have.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 8E, call for motion to approve payment in the amount of $78,601.47 to Morrisville Fire Company as payment per the fire fund as of December 31, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries.
I think Scott wants a second on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 8F, call for a motion to approve the trade of a spare Motorola XP6500 mobile police radio in exchange for two Dell mobile data terminal systems that would be installed in police patrol vehicles, all as described by Corporal Smith earlier.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8G, call for a motion to approve Gilmore and Associates, Inc., recommended contractual payment number one for the total amount of $219,545.02, including the change order number one in the amount of $8,339.57 to James D. Morrissey, Inc., to be paid out of the State Highway Fund.
So moved.
Discussion.
Can you, can you tell the public what that is?
This is our, the information that we talked about earlier about the State Highway Fund that we get monies every year for so that we can work on the roadway systems within the borough. What we do is we put this out to bid, the, the winning bid went to James D. Morrissey. We did two roadways, and it cost us $219,545.02. There were some extra items that John later wanted to cover when it had to do with taking the paving closer to the edge, edge of the roadway area where the handicap accessibility ramps were. So we had an increase of $8,339.57. And again, that gets paid out of State Highway Fund.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8H, call for a motion, as described by Barbara Bowers just a little while ago, to consider and approve the Civil Service Commission conducting its own testing in order to develop and certify the eligibility list expeditiously.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I have some questions. Barb, you said that it would cost between $18,800 and $2,400?
It was $18.
$18.50, okay, just making sure.
Yes, scoring the test.
Yeah. Well, you said $18.50, and I just wanted to make sure, is it like, if it was $18 or $1,800, you know? So, so I just wanted to verify that. Also, I know we get the civil service list, and I know that some of the officers have MOPAC and some of them don't have MOPAC. Is there any advantageous, is there anything for us to do if we looked at the officers that don't have MOPAC?
They don't pay to get that.
And what cost would that be? Would it be beneficial to the borough if we just paid a partial, or maybe just 20% or 25% of that in order to get those officers? Like, why don't those officers have MOPAC? They didn't go to the academy. Oh, so then we would, they, if we hired them, they would, we would have to give them time off to go to the academy. Okay.
Doesn't pay to do that.
It doesn't pay, yeah. Just wanted to verify if there was other things we could do to incite officers.
Also, if I may add, if we do send them to the academy, there's a chance that they get out of the academy, they graduate, they come here, and then they can leave us. out of the academy, they graduate, they come here and then they can leave us. So spending that wouldn't be beneficial.
You could also make it, like, I, I also believe that, that for some of our part-time, like, we had a part-timer that came and he lasted 30 days. We should have something in there that he needs to pay back something to the borough for the training that we do and provide for him. Because it is a cost to the borough and if they're not gonna stay, the borough shouldn't have to incur that cost.
Sure.
But that's a further discussion down the line.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Can I add, I know you started the vote, can I add, can we just do this on a one-year basis and not do this all the time? Is this, is this a permanent decision or is this just because we can't find officers? So next year, we would go back to the, okay, I just wanted to make sure about that. Did you have something?
Yeah. I, I would, yeah. I, I would love to engage in conversation with you and the mayor at some point about what the critical potential really looks like in the law enforcement today. In fact, I don't know if this is anything that was before, but the way exams are running now is almost impossible in some way. So if you're gonna set an exam, I know there's like a certain case where they came and just went over eligible and whatnot, there are tools that you have to follow. But the more frequent you run your exam process, the more likely you're gonna fill this critical mass issue as the law looks like. And frankly, I, I feel a little bit more progressive about that. And in a future conversation, there are reimbursement issues or reimbursement ability in some of these people that have not had an opportunity to go to the academy that doesn't have. There, there are some positives to that, but I think there should be a discussion about like, um, if they're able to pay for something, I think they give back if they should want.
Right.
As a part of the conversation, it was just a thought.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Paul?
Clay, if you would, if you wanna step up since Barbara already did her time and maybe try to explain what the critical levels are, like the, the list, the previous list and what this list looks like and, and why we're doing this. Just a numbers standpoint, how the numbers have really went down.
In the meantime, I'm sorry, Ms. Sherlock, you had something?
I just wanted to reference that there was a time, more than a year ago, that was suggested that we do do our own tests and it was dismissed as being not viable, so. But if this is the only way we're gonna get officers, then I guess-
When Clay gives, when, when Clay reads the numbers off, you'll see why. The, the last consortium was next to no one.
Exactly. We had three people and two people dropped out. I, I-
The previous consortiums, we've had 200 people.
Y'all wanna let him talk?
There he is. I'm the Secretary for the Borough Civil Service Commission. Sorry, um, the reason why we had a problem with this list for eligibility is that we literally only had 21 candidates that we had passed the Act 120 training that we could actually look at. Now, out of, that, that's out of 172 people that signed up to take the consortium's test. And in that test, 75 individuals did not show up to take the final test. 30 failed the physical, 67 passed the physical and the written, and 66 just passed the written. So we ended up with only 21 options. We tried all 21 and we only had one gentleman down in Florida who could not make it to come put in his application and another gentleman who was unfortunately disqualified. So it's, it's getting to the point where we are in between lists, having difficulties where people are just not showing up. They're paying the fee to take this test, they're not showing up. And then the people that actually passed the test, that are actually one, Act 120 qualified are few and far between. So it's, it's, it's getting less and less. This test was 21, I believe the previous list that we had was 39 individuals that were Act 120 trained and we had to contact. And we only had two people that were interested in that. We've had multiple discussions with different individuals. Some of the reasons are varied from, in, things going on in the department at this time, other options that there's more money elsewhere, bonus signups and things like that. It, it's something to be discussed with our officers and with the council and others to try to put together something that would make us a little more attractive to the individuals on the list and everything so that they would be more interested in coming in and filling out the paperwork. Also, too, the other option that was mentioned, we don't offer right now is email. The option to email the packet to an individual to fill out and send to us and then come in with a physically signed copy and everything for our records and everything. As it stands right now, they have to come to the borough, they have to get the packet and they have to return with the signed copies.
Why don't we have something where they can do an email?
We are discussing that and we were talking with the lawyers and everything, we're, we in the future would like to offer the option of putting onto perhaps the Police Department or even the township website because both advertise, as well as, you know, on any other options that we have for a packet that they could download and fill out and then eventually bring the paperwork signed and everything to us when they report for an interview and things like that. This way, we have the information to begin the background checks and everything else and they will provide the, the signatures and everything when they arrive, the hard copies. It's, it's, it's been a discussion, the last couple, Scott can tell you, meetings that we've had. And we hope that we can come up with a solution and get it fixed so that we can get it out there. I mean, it is, it is a good idea. It was suggested by one of the individuals, the gentleman from Florida that could not make it. He asked specifically, is there a copy I can download that I can send to you and then bring the hard copies with me? We did not have that option, unfortunately. It was not advertised that way or written that way. So that is pretty much what has launched that discussion. So it's a recent, recent undertaking that we're looking at.
Okay. So there were 21 officers who qualified?
On this, yes, 21 officers that qualified and two individuals that were interested. One that actually physically came in to get the packet and unfortunately was disqualified.
So there were 19 that they just did not apply to Morrisville?
Yes.
Do you know, do you know, did those 19 get jobs in other departments and other municipalities?
We have no idea. The consortium does not keep information on that. They do not have them report back or anything. It's kind of on their own if they wish to choose to give them that information.
Okay, because I know there were a lot of municipalities that had openings. I know Falls was looking like for four officers.
They have this attractive package right now for pay as well as the bonuses that they get when they sign up. So they are attracting a lot of people. But I mean, that, that's part of the problem. Our, our package as it stands right now is, is not as attractive, doesn't stand out as well. And, you know, there, there are some things that need to be discussed about, perhaps, you know, shunning things from the top down, you know, and making it a little more attractive and everything. It's something for, you know, the council to, to think about and to talk about with the Police Department and with the union and everything, to see what can be done and offered and make it a little more of an option for someone to come here and be an officer and stay rather than not come here at all or just come for a little while and then go to another job.
Okay.
And any further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Clay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, on to council committees and commission appointments. For the Library Board, we have one, three, one three-year appointment that it's a remainder of an, an expired term that expires on March 1, 2024. And we have a letter of interest from Maura Walsh. So all in-
I would like to make that nomination.
Thank you. Yeah, I couldn't remember how we do that. Is it how we vote?
Yes.
All in, any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, congratulations, Ms. Walsh. The Environmental Advisory Council has a three-year term expiring December 15, 2026. And by the way, they also have the remainder of an expired term, the remainder of a term that's expiring on December 22, 2025, but more about that later. For the first, for, for the three-year term that's expiring December 15, 2026, we have a letter of interest for reappointment from Nicole Ramon.
I'd like to make that nomination of Nicole Ramon, please.
Thank you. Any other nominations? All in favor of Nicole Ramon?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, congratulations, Ms. Ramon. The Economic Development Corporation has a remainder of an, of a term that expires on March 1, 2026, for which we have a letter of interest from Joseph McGowan. I hear any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Joseph McGowan for the EDC.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Mr. McGowan. I also want to point out that we have the, the filing vacancies that we're looking for anyone's expression of interest. Civil Service Commission has a six-year term that's expiring January 31, 2030. The envirom, yeah, the Environmental Advisory Council, which we were just talking about, yes?
The seat was filled last month.
Thank you. That's why we make these announcements. Okay, thank you, Ms. Colgan. Then we have, which one, you're talking about the, the Environmental Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That seat is filled.
Great, okay. Then moving on to the Morrisville Municipal Authority, there's one five-year term expiring January 8, 2029.
That's in time.
Yeah. Well, no, that's when it expires, so you have to back out five years from that. So it's, it's gonna be January 8th, 2024. That'll be here before you know it. And then the Planning Commission has one four-year term expiring January 21, 2028. Also, the Zoning Hearing Board has two three-year appointments, both expiring January 4, 2027, one of which is an alternate position. So if any of you or you know anyone who's interested in any of these things, please send in an expression of interest by email to the Borough Manager and we'll be sure to consider it. Any other business?
May real quick?
Okay.
No, I just wanted to say, we just want to wish, you know, for Flagler and Associates, wish everyone happy holidays, a happy new year. Thank this board for your trust for the last year and the people who are leaving, they, I mean, they are going to be missed. Nancy, Bob, Carlitha, Jason, your service to your town is, should be appreciated. I mean, I'm up here, I've done this for 10 years in different places. I know all the ins and outs of different localities, different municipalities. You guys do really do a thankless job as the nearest politicians who are, you know, looking over your town, volunteer, you're, you're really volunteers. We can say you're compensated, but you guys are not compensated for the amount of work you do. You are volunteers, you're interested in your town, you're taking care of your town and you guys should all be commended for your service.
Thank you, Scott. And I, I want to return that and, and wish Flagler and Associates, both you and Adam Flagler, who is here in the front row, and his father Randy Flagler, who unfortunately is suffering his umpteenth bout with COVID. It's been a tough year for, for, for the, the Flagler family, but they've represented us faithfully and steadily throughout and we appreciate their support and advice and goodwill. Thank you. Any other business?
I'd like to say that there's cake in the back.
There's always room for cake.
I just, thank you. I didn't know there was cake. Is it vanilla?
I have no idea.
I just, yeah, I would like to make a statement, please. First, I'd like to express my heartfelt thank you to this community for the privilege and the honor to be able to serve for these last four years and many years prior. In particular, I'd like to thank my family and friends because without their assistance and help all along the way, it's, it's not done by one person. I am sad that I won't be serving in the capacity as a council person, but that will not stop my desire to continue to do what I'm currently involved in. So congratulations to the newly elected officials and I wish them all the best. And I believe Morrisville is in a much better place and it has a very good future of rising up because of the American Rescue Money we, we received and the new EIT, which is now in place. We will be able to provide many new changes that should benefit the borough. So, and for that, I'm grateful. I wish everyone a memorable holiday season. Thank you all. Now let's eat cake.
And with that, I'll consider a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. I just want to say, it's been a pleasure. This is not for the faint of heart. I'm telling you, this is not for the faint of heart. So if you do not have a heart to do this, you do not need to do this. So, but these past two years, I've worked with some wonderful people and I've learned a lot about this borough. And I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and blessings to everyone.
Thank you, Carlitha. Jason?
Look, I'm bad at doing homework to begin with, like, this has been a lot, but, you know, happy to help, hope it did.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Hey, Jason.
Anyone else before we wrap it up? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone. This meeting's adjourned.
I don't know who's that is, that's been sitting there forever.